I will order the meeting of the Greenwood Council on Monday, August 21st. If you would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. After the pledge, we'll then pray this evening by Pastor Alan Pierce, the pastor of Northern Park Baptist Church here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our Father, we thank you today that we can assemble here and thank you for this council. Lord, I pray that you will bless them as they or conduct the business supremely and or give wisdom as they do so. Lord, we pray that you would bless this city or because of this council. And may your will be done, I ask, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. Roll call.
Bates.
Present.
Ben, here. Campbell.
Here.
Gibson, here. Hill.
Here.
Popper.
Here.
Lexi.
Here.
Fiddleton.
Here.
And Williams is absent.
We do have a quorum. All of you should have received copies of our minutes from the last regular meeting of August 7th. Got a motion?
Assembly.
Motion by Mr. Bates, second by Mr. Lexi. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? You're in and then roll call in a minute.
Bates.
Aye.
Ben, here.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Popper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
And Fiddleton.
All right. Motion's approved on a vote of eight to zero. Reports, Corporation Council.
The IED semi-monthly report is available on the SharePoint.
Right. Controller?
This side.
Other committee and board reports, I think y'all should have received a copy of my report from the last RDC meeting. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask. Do you have a committee or board reports? All right. This time, we have a someone from HWC Engineering to update the council on the comprehensive plan rewrite, so.
Thank you. My name is Adam Peaper. I'm a community planner with HWC Engineering and the project manager for your Conference of Plan update. Appreciate you allowing me to come talk tonight, introduce myself. I should also say we have a team partner in this effort, STAN Tech, which is a national planning and engineering practice that will be supporting our team. And appreciate the opportunity to continue our work with the city of Greenwood and really just excited that we're getting this process started. For... Just real quick, I'm sure you all who deal with the Conference of Plan on a more regular basis are familiar, but for the benefit of the audience or anyone tuning in virtually, just briefly, you know, the Conference of Plan really is the long-range guide for community growth, development, redevelopment, and investment. Indiana State Statute says you can't have zoning without a Conference of Plan. So, the Conference of Plan provides that legal justification of the basis to then have your zoning ordinance and enact those development regulations. And obviously, it's used by you all, Gabe, his department staff, other city staff, and the developing community in making decisions about land use, transportation, utility infrastructure, and so on. Kind of our understanding for why we're here right now, and certainly would appreciate your input, confirmation, or thoughts about this, but the city's current Conference of Plan was adopted in 2007. It was parts that were updated in 2012, but we've seen, you know, over an 18,000-person population gain since that time in addition to substantial commercial industrial development. So, we think it's an opportune time to take a look at this. Understanding that, you know, in 2007, a lot of that plan was focused on outward growth was certainly more opportunities for growth around the periphery of the community at that time, but now we're going to start shifting some of that focus from from growth to reinvestment in your established corridors and employment districts and neighborhoods. That's not to say there aren't additional growth opportunities, certainly to the west, communicating a vision for what appropriate growth may be in that direction. Also, understanding that there needs to be a significant thoroughfare plan component of this Conference of Plan update to make sure that investments in the transportation network happen in correspondence with additional growth or development and certainly so that adequate right-of-way space for those improvements is captured when development occurs. And then beyond that, like I said, there's 18,000 people who live in Greenwood now that have not had the opportunity to take part in the City of Greenwood Conference of Plan process and using this as a unique opportunity to get a new group of residents and business owners engaged. So, our process, or really the purpose behind this, is to evaluate the existing conditions in the community. Certainly, the trends that have taken place since that 2007 plan creation, including demographic and socioeconomic trends, but also built the natural environment. That's combined with a significant amount of community input and engagement that I'll talk a little bit more about in a minute here. But use those two key pieces of information to create a unified vision for the future. More importantly than translate that vision into the series of kind of actionable projects and initiatives that really are going to result in implementation of that broader community vision. And again, all of that is going to be supported by community engagement. What that means in terms of timeline is we envision this as a 12-month process. So, we started last month with Gabe and his staff. We started with our first steering committee meeting, which some of you are a part of just a couple of weeks ago. And we're already underway with some of our data analysis, gathering, information gathering, and mapping. We're moving into this second phase of reach a consensus, which is our big initial community engagement and outreach approach with an in-person community workshop coming up on September 12th. We have an online workshop and some input exercises that actually just went live today. We're going to be conducting a couple of days worth of stakeholder meetings, so these are kind of the key leaders and topic experts that we need to speak with, certainly as part of this process, and would appreciate your input on who some of those individuals may be. We're going to do a pop-up event. We've discussed the farmer's market and possibly some other activities to get out in the community and make sure they're aware of this process, as well as broader youth and community group engagement. After we take all that information, kind of synthesize it where we see consensus for the positive, things that we need to make sure are preserved and protected in Greenwood. Consensus maybe of things to work on where we know we need to devote some some serious effort in the plan, and then there's usually this in-between that we kind of have to sort out. And that gets to that third phase, forming the plan, which is a series of incremental meetings with the project steering committee to tailor and refine project recommendations. We'll be coming back to you all at that point to share the engagement results in that initial plan direction, get your confirmation, before we move into the final phase where we're detailing that action plan, funding strategy for how this gets paid for, and then refining the draft plan. Again, we'll come back, present that to you. Our intent is to be here a couple of times before we ever ask for a motion or a vote on anything to really make sure we're all on the same page and have community buy-in before we move to the public hearing adoption. Again, the Conference of Plan will go to the Plan Commission first for a recommendation to you all, where it would then be adopted by resolution. As I said, we truly believe community engagement is foundational to the success of this planning process. We have a project website that's been set up. It's plangreenwood.com. As I said, that hosts information about the plan process and also links to some of these online input opportunities. We have a community survey that's live, as well as an interactive mapping exercise, zoom in, zoom out. You can highlight areas of opportunity, areas of concern, draw trail alignments, or identify problematic intersections. And then, like I said, we're balancing, obviously, online engagement within person, our first big community workshop. It's going to be in a few weeks here at the library. That is formatted as an open house, so people can come and go anytime between 4:30 and 7:30 as their schedule allows. We'll give a brief presentation a couple of times during that meeting, but otherwise, there's some facilitated exercises that attendees will be able to take part in. During this process, certainly, I would appreciate an opportunity to sit down with all of you or each of you individually, whether it's grabbing a coffee or Zoom meeting or something like that is better for your schedule. But since we're here and early in this process, just a couple of questions. One of the things we'd like to know is, if there are any specific questions or kind of items that you'd like us to research through this process, that we can use this opportunity to help answer. So, is it, you know, how can Greenwood better attract this type of investment or these types of businesses or jobs? Are you interested in getting broader community input on a specific topic?
Anything, Reddell?
Okay. And then also, you know, I mean, again, happy to get into a more detailed or in-depth discussion, but if there's one thing, obviously, you or a majority of you approved this process being included in the Planning Department pledge for this year, that hopefully there was some reason behind that, if this plan can accomplish, you know, one key thing for the city. Thoughts on what your particular interest is?
I know mine interests is always downtown.
Sure.
So, probably what, I mean, we've done a lot the last 10 years. So, probably, you know, focusing on what the next 10 years look like.
Absolutely. And that was a common theme in our discussion at the first steering committee meeting as well, the whole town area, and how important that is to the community and the act of your point. How do we leverage the recent successes and establish that plan for the next 10 years?
I think top of mind for me right now, especially with interstate expansion, a lot of the roads expanding, and how that might look, and what may turn detailed, and what we're going to do for those single-family homes to make sure the traffic is going to withstand all the shit happening and all these changes to the areas. That's top of mind for me, covering and all the good stuff.
Yeah.
I think right now that obviously, we can't expand north. Southeast and southwest are the big areas right now that we'd like to make sure we do right. The councils, you know, we've, the Worsfield Road, I-65 interchange, the that area in south, then even east of there. So, those are the areas that, you know, we have, that personally I have the most concern about, you know, what we're going to do.
Yeah, and I think the current plan has served you very well, but I think there were some areas that were far enough off into the future at the time of that planning where it was kind of by its mixed use, and we'll figure that out. And that time is here now, so really trying to determine and articulate that vision is important.
Any notes?
Just again, thank you for your time tonight, and like I said, we'll be reaching out for work through this process.
All right. Thank you, Adam. All right. This is an opportunity to set aside for members of the audience to address the council concerning items that are on tonight's agenda. So, if you're here, would like to speak to us, you step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. There is a five-minute time limit per person and a 20-minute time limit per topic. Or if you're online, please speak up. All right. Seeing none, then moving on, ordinance as resolutions, notice of intent to consider, ordinance number 2325.
In ordinance, amend the official zoning map adopted by reference, unified development ordinance number 2029, proposed rezoning across the 82.797 acres located west of Honey Creek Road and north of Whiteland Road. Overing properties sponsored by Lexi.
Do you have a motion? Second, Mr. Lexi. Second, Mr. Bates. All right. Board's yours.
Want to be sworn in?
No.
No.
No. It's a little different than the Plan Commission, so.
All right. It's been a little lost, except for the council. Good evening, Rex, Ramish, Oldie Homes. Thanks for having us on the agenda here tonight. We go a couple items back to back. The first one here is the Dory Pre-Zone. And this project is located at the northwest corner of what is Honey Creek and Whiteland Road. The property that you see in the purple and gray, that is the Arwood Homes against Scottsdale State's community that is currently under construction. So, we're in that southeast corner there outlined in red. We have a proposed project on the table. This is the site plan oriented to the left is north, so north is north. This is our proposed site plan. It's 160 lots. It's two different lot sizes. So, we propose to have two homes series offered here. We decided to do something a little bit different from a land planning perspective, kind of create that curvature. It helps control streets within the neighborhood, but also provides a nice varied street scape. The houses kind of have that natural offset setback side to side or adjacent lot to adjacent lot. So, we like how this plan has come together. There are sub streets into the Arwood community that would be to the bottom of the page and to the left side of the page. You can see there's a couple of different pocket park areas to the north and to the south, and then one centralized in the area location. Paper balls, four boards, those types of things that are in place right now. We would interconnect those pocket parks, open spaces with trails throughout the community, so everyone would have a chance to access. Next couple of slides here are just a sampling of the representative architecture. There would be a mix of ranch and two-story plans offered here for this intention of fire. This is a separate page here as well with some different architectural styles. You know, not everyone loves everything. I always did a lot of looks in that the top right corner. That is the Prairie-style architecture. So, again, it's not for everyone, but it also serves a purpose for those particular buyers that need like that. And then again, it helps vary the street scape and the monotony of things like that, which the code tries to combat, so. The process that we've seen, we filed in June, that's the Plan Commission in July. We're here before you tonight asking for it first, being only with respect to anything outstanding. This project did require a traffic study. We did get that traffic study back actually today. So, we are going to review that in detail with Mr. Sanjob, make sure all the appropriate measures are in place, and then when we come back before either next time, we see your vote, so. With that available, to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions at this time?
You just say vinyl under your homes. We know we've proposed not to be vinyl here. If that's a commitment, we would add that as an additional.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, there would be. Yes, a motion to amend.
We have a motion to amend ordinance 2325 to exclude the use of vinyl siding. Second, Mr. Bates. Any discussion on the motion to amend ordinance 2325? You're in and then roll call on the motion to amend ordinance 2325.
Bates.
Aye.
Ben, here.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Popper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Popper.
All right. Motion to amend ordinance 2325 is approved and voted eight to zero. Any further questions or discussion on ordinance 2325 as amended?
Well, I would note that your timeline, you can move up two weeks, because this is the first and only reading that you'll have in front of the council.
Yeah. On a rezone, on your notice of intent to consider, it's one reading, one vote. So, you won't have a chance to come back and tell us about the traffic state, which is something I would be interested in.
My apologies for the time. Sorry.
So, all right. Any other comments, questions, concerns?
I have a question. How many other, how many houses did you have?
There's 160 home sites.
160 homes. And you may know this from a planning side. Are they planning like a roundabout or something for that, that Whiteland? Honey Creek is right now, that's just a T. I'm just curious of how adding those new homes will cause problems, or are you going to do shoulders? Like, how does that work?
Yeah, so that's part of kind of what the traffic study is to help us unfold with the engineering department. So, it does warrant sometimes improvement, whether that be now or in the future. That's what we have to figure out, because 160 home sites doesn't happen overnight. So, we kind of, we have to figure out what to have to be given is, whether it's dedicated term lengths in the short term, or, you know, a roundabout or a signal. So, we would be, as part of one of the other conditions that is made on Plan Commission, we would have to dedicate the full right-of-way necessary for a future roundabout, so that it certainly would, you know, what we can control groundwise, right-of-way.
Mr. Nelson, you have something to say?
I think one thing to add there is some complexity with that. This is on the outer edge of Greenwood. So, we do have to deal with multiple jurisdictions for this roundabout. We couldn't force it upon the other jurisdictions. We'd have to coordinate with our neighbors to the south and to get Argusville and the county. So, this would be three municipalities or three government electories coming together to really plan this. But we are asking for the right ways part of our proposed conditions of an approval for Plan Commission.
But the way local governments all cooperate so well, I'm sure.
We don't even know.
Yes. Yeah, I'd already talked to Gabe, I think, and the mayor as well about the road improvements there. It's not the only roundabout we need on 160.
It's definitely on our radar as an intersection and alignment that would be great if we could run about. So, it is on our radar, something that we're paying attention to.
Thank you.
Is it possible for us to get an overview of what you find on that traffic study? Since you won't be back before us, could you send something to us?
Yes, we can share that with staff, and then however, whether it's us communicating with the council or if the vast coming from the engineering department gets.
Any other questions, comments?
Just a quick comment or two. Number one, I like, obviously, it's not a great element to be proponent that single-family residences, really like your, the options you have here. We're not looking at cookie cutter community, and all the houses are just the same, and I like that. That, to me, is very cool.
Yeah, thank you. We put a lot of time and energy into it, so it's always nice when others like it as well.
Right. Any other comments or questions? You're in and then roll call, ordinance 2325 as amended.
Ben, here.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson. That was a aye. Sorry, I said yay. Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Popper.
Aye.
Lexi. Fiddleton.
There.
And Bates.
Aye.
Ordinance 2325 passes, as amended, passes on a vote of eight to one. Thank you very much.
Seven to one.
I'm sorry, seven to one. I need to go to school. Ordinance 2330.
In ordinance, amend the official zoning map adopted by reference, unified development ordinance number 2029, proposed rezoning across the 24.7 acres located between Comes and Five Points Road, Candace property. I apologize. Sponsored by Lexi.
Now a motion? Motion, Mr. Bates. Second. Second, this veteran. Right. You have.
I have. For the record, Rex, Ramish, Oldie Homes. So, this project or parcel is on the complete opposite side of the city. It's on the east side of Greenwood, south of County Line, east of I-65. So, a little bit better of an overview here. You see I-65, County Line to the north. A couple of the other permits, the cases from the Arwood project that have occurred or are occurring along County Line Road. The subject parcel outlined in red, it's about 24 acres in size, 55 proposed lots. Oldies, or I guess it would be, Oldies, Del Webb, the Sage Ryer, Del Webb Development to the east is the most Arwood project east of Five Points. And then there's a plot that was recently approved in the Rich Top subdivision, which is with White Square in the middle. Zoom in of this particular property here. Again, 55 lots. So, east-west connectivity was very important to the planning and engineering departments in the city, so we're able to provide that, which is helpful to forcing people to build up to the main street, sorry, down to make sure of the County Line Road. Again, it is, it's a site that has some various styles of architecture. This is likely to be mostly two-story. There is a single-family ranch planned in there, but this is, you know, for the typical family buyer as well. The unique thing about this particular property is that it helps facilitate, excuse me, helps facilitate bringing utilities out to the Five Points Road area. So, that's one of the key points here, but we have worked tirelessly with Mr. and Mrs. McManus, who are along Five Points Road, they're kind of that cutout there on how to achieve the road improvements required by the planning and engineering departments. We've met with them multiple times, had multiple phone conversations, visited them outside of the property, and finally come to a lovely agreement, I guess, to make the improvements in a manner that it impacts them very little. So, probably bring that to the table. With that, would entertain any questions or motion?
All right. Any questions? Is there a motion?
So, yeah, questions. Yes, sir. So, were these folks able to use stuff in the Del Webb neighborhood? Because I see a lack of green space part around the perimeter. Maybe two common areas among each. Correct, yeah. So, no, so these would not be part of the Del Webb community, therefore, they would not have the ability to utilize those.
What is directly to the north and to the south, like that?
So, yeah, so consider these kind of three sister tracks, so to speak. So, it was one owner at one time. It added subdivision into very couple parcels, so they are again, kind of these shock-bad style farm tracks. We did inquire, tried to attain both of them and create a kind of a different site plan, maybe a more local site plan. But for various reasons between both, that's not on the table, too. So, we worked with Gabe's department, make sure we provide that connectivity, the sub streets to the north and to the south.
Is this maybe a question for Gabe? Like, is that how it's zoned on either side of that? Like, you know, I get to see, like, you wouldn't want a gas station coming in like right behind those houses or like or whatever, like, this is kind of a...
Similar to that, you have to come forward to.
I can speak a little bit about that. Right now, Greenwood does not have a perfectly square boundary in this section of Greenwood, in this northeast section, so north and south are actually part of the county as well as the whole lot on this proposed subdivision, and he's actually still in the county. They're operating as farmland. They would need to go through a rezone of some type if they were to become a residential subdivision or one of the, you know, commercially used, industrial used. It's very likely that due to their proximity, the county would probably tell them that they would need to annex Greenwood before they develop. Typically, if we're kind of surrounding the parcel, they will ask for them to come through previous planning and zoning and apply for annexation. But right now, it's just farmland. They would need to go through some type of a zoning process, but they are under county jurisdiction.
Process through us, like the process for county.
Yeah, unless they were to annex to Greenwood, and historically, if someone's surrounded by Greenwood, the county will ask them to not file with them, but to file for annexation instead. But that, that's not a guarantee. It's, that's county on either side of them.
So, but does county have any, let's say, sewer service out to that area, if something wanted to go in there?
We would provide the sewer service.
So, they're not going to build there unless we say yes, basically?
Correct. We would have to allow them to accommodate utilities. Correct, we would have to allow them to look up utilities.
So same deal, again, with vinyl.
All right, a motion.
Okay.
So, Mr. Hopper.
And then I have a second part to the motion, only to clean up some language. Was this favorable nine zero at the? Yes. Yes. I thought that. Yeah, yes. And I meant to show that it was favorable.
Yeah, sorry about that. It is nine zero favorable from plan commission on previous petition. Go back in time, that was favorable eight zero, we just didn't have a whole, that's eight, one member was absent at eight. But this one was favorable nine zero. It also did have a favorable staff recommendation in our Stafford report. And it went through our review process to, for recommendations.
A motion by Mr. Hopper to amend ordinance twenty-three thirty to exclude the use of vinyl siding of the homes and to amend the text of the ordinance to show that there was a nine zero favorable recommendation from the plan commission. Do you have a second?
Sir.
Second, Mr. Lexi. Any discussion on the motion to amend ordinance twenty-three thirty? Hearing none in roll call, motion to amend ordinance twenty-three thirty.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron. Aye.
Ordinance twenty-three thirty is amended on a vote of eight to zero. Any further discussion of ordinance twenty-three thirty as amended? Hearing none in roll call, ordinance twenty-three thirty as amended.
Gibson. Aye. Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Yes.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron. Aye. Yeah.
Aye. Ordinance twenty-three thirty passes over seven to one. First reading, ordinance twenty-three twenty-seven.
An ordinance providing for additional appropriations from American Rescue Plan, current advised with local physical recovery fund, a budget classification four-four-nine, ninety-five thousand dollars. And the cumulative capital improvement cigarette tax plan, the budget classification four-three-nine, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars, sponsored by Bates and Gibson, public community scheduled for August twenty-first, twenty twenty fifteen.
Do you have a motion?
Yes.
Motion for Ms. Gibson, second.
Right.
Second, Mr. Hopper.
Yes, sir.
It is scheduled for public hearing. So open up for public hearing. If you're here, wish to speak for or against. Ordinance twenty-three twenty-seven, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, or if you are online, please speak up. Hearing none, most public hearing. Mr. Wright.
Apologize, I wasn't here at the last meeting to introduce this one, so I wanted to be available for any questions. Specifically for this, the first part coming out of the American Rescue Plan funds is for two storm sirens to be installed and then also for some servers related to our cybersecurity efforts this year. The second part of the cigarette tax fund relates to the election costs. Our portion of the primary election cost were just under sixty-seven thousand dollars. So we're, we're assuming worst case scenario, it would be similar for the general, which is why we're requesting one hundred and thirty-five K for that. And then also the other part of that is related to our cybersecurity consultancy and some software. As part of that service that we initiated in the middle of last year, they have put us onto a couple of different software platforms, both for firewalls as well as for training for staff on cybersecurity. So that's part of that monthly cost that we're asking to fund here, and you'll see that in the twenty-twenty-four budget moving forward under the IT budget.
Are any questions for Mr. Wright?
Those storm sirens, are those going to be two additional or are they replacing?
They are two brand new ones. So we have the, the ones that are in place now get inspected annually, but these are two brand new ones. One of them, I believe Chief Boyce said would be on the servicing, mostly the southeast side to improve coverage out there. And then the other one is going to be near the honey creek and White Moon Road area to improve coverage on that part of the city where we're getting more residential.
I had, had someone inquire about one that I think it was needing repairs or something because it wasn't working. Do you know anything about that?
I don't, I mean, you go ahead and see where, where that though.
As long as you speak to that maybe perhaps, are you thinking of counter at?
I, I'm not sure of the exact one. They emailed me asking about it and then I emailed some individuals at the city and they said that they was waiting to get some repairs done. So I was just trying to get an appeal. I didn't know if these were to replace that one or.
No, no, these are both to be additions to what we already have, so I can.
I talked to the Assistant Chief Frank Coy just today about those. And the one at Camby has been out of service and they were waiting for parts and they got parts in and they found out that it had been struck by lightning. So they had to have Duke come out because there was a problem with the electrical power to it. Now it's, they have it up, but it's still needing some parts on it, so they're waiting for those.
All right, any other discussion on ordinance twenty-three twenty-seven? Hearing none in roll call, ordinance twenty-three twenty-seven, first reading.
Yo.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron. Aye. Campbell.
Aye.
And Gibson.
Ordinance twenty-three twenty-seven passes first reading eight zero. Resolution twenty-three fourteen.
Res- a resolution agreement common counsel expressing interest in the purchase of a real property on county line road.
Do you have a motion? Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Gibson. Anybody want to talk to us about this one? Welcome.
Well, with the Greenwood Parks Department, I was not available last meeting to intro this, so I'll have an answer in questions.
Rob, I know that's, I heard on subdivision somewhere in there, I looked at the diagram here, I couldn't place exactly where it is. Could you give a little bit more?
Yeah, geographically, if you take Community South Hospital, go across south kind of my road, it's that empty parcel there.
Okay.
Just east of the.
The range.
Yeah.
Is there interest in this property for trails?
Correct.
Any other questions, discussion, comments? Hearing none in roll call, resolution twenty-three fourteen, first reading.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron. Aye. Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. And who?
Resolution twenty-three fourteen passes first reading eight zero. Thank you, Mr. Turner. Now, second reading, resolution twenty-three ten.
A resolution declaring certain area within the city agreement, economic revitalization area, while buying certain manufacturing equipment for tax abatement, setting time and place for public hearing, anti-technology, anti-tool America, sponsored by Campbell.
Do you have a motion? Motion, Mr. Hopper, second.
Sir.
Second, Mr. Lexi. Any discussion, resolution twenty-three ten. Hearing none, then roll call, resolution twenty-three ten, second reading.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron. Aye. Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. Bill.
Aye.
And Hopper.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three ten passes second reading eight to zero. Resolution twenty-three thirteen.
A resolution of the agreement common council authorizing continued participation in interlocal association for additional five years period.
Do you have a motion? Motion for Ms. Gibson, second. Second, Mr. Hopper. Any discussion?
Have we figured out what this interlocal association is?
Yes, I asked the mayor about that. He knew exactly what it was and he told me.
It's, it's an association with the region five, Department of Workforce Development, include Greenfield, Franklin, Shellyville, Beach Grove, sees the monies that go to training facilities for people who are receiving training through workforce one.
Yeah, this, this is a, puts us in association with some of the northern communities that we share funds that were provided through workforce one and this allows us to get grants through workforce one through that group of entities, so. Yeah, thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, hearing none, the roll call, resolution twenty-three thirteen, second reading.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron. Aye. Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
And Lexi.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three thirteen has a second reading eight to zero. New business introduction of new ordinances and resolutions, ordinance number twenty-three twenty-eight.
An ordinance providing for an additional appropriation from the fire fund, a budget classification four-three-six, ninety-four thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars for a new motor for engine ninety-three and to rebuild the transmission of engine ninety-four, sponsored by Bates and Gibson, public hearing scheduled for September sixth, twenty twenty-three, and an express suspension rules through first reading.
Mr. President, I move for suspension of the rules.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Gibson to suspend the rules through first reading. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Betron. Any discussion on suspension? Hearing none in roll call, suspension of the rules through first reading on ordinance twenty-three twenty-eight.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron. Aye. Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
And Bill.
Aye.
Motion to suspend the rules passes eight zero. Do you have a motion on first reading?
So.
Motion, Mr. Bates, second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Gibson. Mr. Wright, now we'll let you, tell us what this is all about.
So, in the last couple of weeks, we've had a little bad luck with fire efforts. The first one, engine ninety-three, the motor went bad on that. We got two quotes, one was for an in-frame rebuild and one was for a brand new motor. The difference between the two was about ten thousand dollars. We are recommending the brand new motor because it comes with a five-year warranty. So what we would like to do is seventy-four thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars of this additional appropriation would go towards that. Additionally, I believe it was last week or just the end of the week before, I got a message from the fire chief that the transmission on engine ninety-four blew and they got a book to repair that of twenty thousand dollars, which obviously their repair maintenance budget did not plan for two rather large apparatus repairs in, in one year, so we're asking to also improve that submission for bridge.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wright? Any discussion, any questions on ordinance twenty-three twenty? Hearing none in roll call, ordinance twenty-three twenty-eight, first reading.
Betron. Aye. Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
And Bates.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-three twenty-eight passes first reading eight zero. Ordinance twenty-three twenty-nine.
Ordinance authorized from the city agreement to become a member of the central Indiana Regional Development Authority, presented to Indiana Code thirty-six seven point seven, et cetera, sponsored by Campbell.
If I want to talk about this one? I think this has to do with us joining other, again, northern municipalities on developments that goes, that takes place in this area and rounded Indiana. Resolution twenty-three fifteen.
A resolution of the agreement common council adopting a preliminary strategic economic development plan to the central Indiana Regional Development Authority, presented to Indiana Code thirty-six seven point seven, sponsored by Campbell.
This is a sister resolution to ordinance twenty-three twenty-nine that allows us to, allows the city to use the finances that go along with the being a member of the central Indiana Regional Development Authority. Okay, this lady's business. This is the second opportunity for members of the public to address the council. This time concerning items that are not on tonight's agenda, so if you would like to do so, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Work your own lines, speak up. Hearing none in council, two CF ones.
I'll move to find names on the substantial.
So a motion by Mr. Hopper to find Amazon substantial appliance, a second, Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, passes unanimously.
I'll move by, although I would note, I'm assuming they're not paying people three hundred dollars a year, that's probably their annual salary that's in there divided by the folks. Clean that up, great, next time on their chart. I'll move and find quality custom distribution services and.
We have a motion by Mr. Hopper, second, by Mr. Bates, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, passes unanimously. All right, anything else from the council?
I do, I've got one thing. So I read in the Daily Journal where our commissioners have decided to opt out of the first Indiana funds. I'm disappointed, I'm discouraged, I'm somewhat angry about it. That is our money, that's your money and my money, that's one point five million dollars next year that the folks in Johnson County are not going to get. Some of the reasoning behind it was that, well, we already do it, so why do we need to take the money? Well, every other county does quite a bit too. Hamilton County is always the healthiest county in Indiana. They opted in to take money because they can do more and they realize they can do more. We can do more in Indiana. One of the reasons was, we're already top ten for health in Indiana. That's great until you know that we're like between forty-five and fifty in the United States on health. So being top ten, one of the least healthiest states, probably is still not much to cheer about. So if we sat here for a couple of minutes, we could probably come up with a million different plans and ways to use that one point five million dollars. What irks me is that every year Ronnie West comes here and asks for money for us to fund access Johnson County so that they can pick up folks and take it to their dialysis treatments, to get folks to the doctor for diabetes treatments. And every year we give them money. This money could have been used for that. They could have doubled what they're doing now, tripled what they're doing now. So my suggestion for next year is not to fund it at all, since clearly the county has enough money, that's sixty-some odd thousand dollars, I think, for us, that we could spend hiring another police officer now, still have to buy a car and all those things. But that would be my suggestion, if the county's got so much money that they don't need one point five million dollars to offer services to residents of Johnson County that we shouldn't give any of our money to them. I'd also encourage you all to call or email your commissioners that got until September first to change their mind and opt in. Be the right thing to do, the smart thing to do, instead of wasting our money.
Thank you.
That was it for me.
All right, anyone else?
Health First Indiana.
Health.
Health. Previously known as the Governor's Public Health Commission.
All right, anything else from the council? Even the corporation council?
Nothing to me.
Controller?
Do you have one item that Mr. Hopper kind of led into? Next meeting, I'll be looking to start our first night of budget presentations, so fair warning to everyone, we'll be starting that by September. So they may make for a little bit later nights.
All right, thank you. Anything from the mayor's office? Hearing none, then we adjourn. Thank you everyone.